All right, good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, January 17th. We'll begin with the salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Aaron Mullen.
Here.
John Palmer.
Here.
Jeffrey Brasky.
Here.
Jeffrey Dance.
Here.
And of course, I am here. Thank you.
All right, and welcome back to Ms. Gallagher, who's her first day back from maternity leave. We've missed her. Mr. Clark, I know, is relieved. You can get this shit back on course now. And I'll begin with item number one, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience for public comment? No?
Yes, we're, oh, online, we're bringing them in.
Okay.
Trish is in the room.
All right, can you state your name and where you live?
Trish, can you hear us? She's in the room, she's not talking.
I said my name is Trish Rosemeyer and I live on Edgemont and I have a concern with the SIV ambulance repair.
Okay.
I have a concern about the paint fumes, the noise, and the maintenance of them keeping it up.
Okay, we only, what did we approve as a preliminary plan? And I said at the meeting, you know, they have a long way to go on their end before they get any approval from us here. They have to come back here for approvals. Is this correct, Mr. Clark, right?
That is, that is correct.
Right, so, you know, they're gonna have to come and show us exactly how they're gonna do this and appease the neighbors. So, there's nothing's been finalized yet, you know, they have a good ways to go.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted, um, just had a concern about it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dance, actually, what was approved last month was the conditional use application, so they still have to go through.
Right.
And we put, we put certain conditions on it last month, which are part of the conditional use approval. And they'll need to be back for, for their land development approvals.
Anyone else for public comment?
Okay, Mary's in the room.
Okay, um, this is Mary Eversole, I'm the resident on Edgemont Road. Also concerned about the SIV, and I just have some concerns that I would like to continue to reiterate regarding that in the letter that was sent to all of us. We have driven to the existing business in Langhorn, and it isn't well-maintained, at least not what should be at the beginning of our residential area in Falls Township. All car dealerships and businesses on open space on Route 1 are well-kept. Although we have appreciated open space behind our homes, our concern is not losing the openness of that area, but more so what is going to be there. We realize that the owner of the property has the right and privy to sell, and the buyer has the right and privy to build, but we also are tax-paying residents and owners of homes and acknowledging our concerns with Falls Township to consider a more reasonable business for this area. The initial zoning approval gave SIV ambulance additional space for parking, building, et cetera. It is now trying for more space, further encroaching the distance between our homes and the facility to better enable the transfer of disabled ambulances via tow trucks. Will this operation continue to expand through further zoning approvals and become a building and business operation that should be in a larger commercial complex or a piece of property better suited its need for expansion? They just seem to need a larger area. Once they are here, will the zoning be easier to be approved? Also, it was noted at the first zoning meeting that another 10,000 square feet may eventually be needed for parking. The hours of operation initially were Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. They are now Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5. Currently, the property that may be developed is not always lit. At times, it is completely dark. Also, the lights are currently directed to the ground. Will the SIV ambulance building perimeter lighting be directed down as well? So residential homes will not be affected. Several conditions were approved. One, they cannot store vehicle parts outside the building. All repairs must be undertaken inside the repair facility, and a third-party inspector to annually inspect the paint booth, ensuring there aren't any safety or environmental issues. However, we have concerns about whether these conditions will be carried out in good faith by SIV ambulance. If paint fumes are smelt, can we as residents report this to the EPA and have an inspection? And would the township do this for us as residents? Are SIV ambulance inspectors EPA certified? SIV spent $130,000 to install a state-of-the-art paint booth, capturing 99.84% of contaminants. What are these contaminants? However, minute point 1.6 is, being in a close proximity to a residential community, how will that emission into the atmosphere affect us? Since SIV ambulance is operating in a residential community, can the inspections happen by an EPA inspector and more frequently than yearly? The showroom is outside in the parking lot. Mr. Siv mentioned he wants to make it as clean as possible. What exactly does that mean? Were they in collisions and need extensive bodywork? Will they eventually move to sale? Or will it become a junkyard, so to speak? Also, when disabled ambulances are delivered to the site, will we hear backup signals from tow trucks during evening and/or early morning hours? Mr. Siv mentioned this rarely happens, but it happens. And each time we come back to the table, there seems to be additional needs for this business that will certainly have an impact on the residents bordering this facility and on the neighboring streets. Freeze and buffers, however beautiful nature may be, isn't going to come close to satisfying our concerns for noise and environmental issues. The proposed 30,000-square-foot facility is going to displace water that should be going into the ground. Instead, it will be diverted somewhere else. Currently, there is a stormwater system in place for the existing building and parking lot. There is a settling pond on the south side of the building, the Trans into Martins Creek. It's the creek directly behind the homes on Gloucester. Has anyone investigated how this building and paved areas around the building affect Martins Creek? Will the creek be able to handle the runoff during heavy rain if this project is approved? Will there be water testing to look for contaminants that could enter the storm drains? There should be a list of all oils and chemicals being used. What are the consequences of the conditions set forth by the township we're violating? If we smell paint, if the sirens are tested more frequently for longer periods, if repairs are being done outside of the facility, if disabled vehicles are being delivered at all hours, if there are measurable contaminants in the water samples taken from the creek that exceed permit, and however down on the list of priorities if the site becomes a huge eyesore, this is going to affect the values of our homes. This facility is awfully large for the area, and there are many conditions that better suited for a commercial complex rather than a commercially zoned piece of property that needed specific zoning approval from the very start. Thank you for your attention.
Okay. You want me to respond to some of those items?
Um, it doesn't matter, I mean, if, if you want to, um, if it's more appropriate for you guys to do that when it is actually on the table for one of the meetings. But it's, but I, I'm open, I mean, you listen to me, I'd be more than happy to listen to you.
Okay, well, they, like, I will cover a few of them, they did just get a conditional use. They do have to come back and go through land development process. You know, you mentioned the stormwater, they're gonna have to meet some kind of stormwater requirements that we have. They can't just, you know, build this and not tell us where the stormwater's going. That has to be approved by our engineer. Um, the inspector, we haven't even, somebody inspecting their paint booths? That was discussed, we haven't finalized who's doing that, you know, or how. Um, the hours, he told us he was working Monday through Friday and an occasional Saturday. I don't know if he told you something else since then. Um, he, he did address, we all pointed out that we saw his current site and what a mess it was. You know, and he basically made that clear, that's why he needs to move into a new site. Um, I'm not sure when his, uh, well, I only saw a Google Earth picture, which was really bad, so, um...
It's just as bad on the ground as well.
So, I don't know, you know, the other questions will, will all be addressed when they come before us for a final plan.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, and, and, no, we're just, yeah, it's, it's just a lot, you know, a lot, a lot of, um, um, Uggs here, as far as, as far as we're, you know, talking about and getting together and listening and so on and so forth. So just, more than just concerned, overly concerned about important issues here, so, we just, um, you know, we're just gonna keep it up and, and hopefully, uh, you know, come to some good conclusion with all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, we have another Mary.
Another Mary.
Hi, yes, I live on Gloucester Road. Again, same as what Ms. Eversole said, I have the same concerns, predominantly the noise and the environmental issues, and, uh...
Mr. Dance, can she give her name for the minutes?
Mary Ellen is your name, correct?
Yes, sir, do you need my last name?
Yes.
Hudson, H-U-T-S-O-N.
Thank you. Go ahead, continue.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say, I wanted to reiterate what Ms. Eversole said, and I have the same concerns.
You know, and those are the same concerns that we have as a board, just so that everyone's clear, they're called. Um, and we made that clear to Mr. Siv when he was here. You know, we all had, um, you know, how we felt about the location, the use, and everything else, and we all saw his current property. So, you know, your concerns are the same ones that we had, and he has a long way to go before this gets approved and built, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else for public comment?
That's our last public comment online.
All right, thank you. Um, that takes us to item number two. Britain Realty of Morrisville, waiver of land development, 1 NY Lane.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening. Alan Toadvine, on behalf of the applicant, we're here tonight requesting waiver of land development. Uh, but before we proceed, one comment, the tax parcel number that was noted in the agenda and also in the, uh, resolution that was prepared is inaccurate. The actual and correct tax parcel is 13-028-077. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, you got that?
Yeah, Mr. Toadvine and I discussed that earlier, we'll, um, we'll get the resolution changed and, uh, we'll get the, um, Mr. Jones, the township engineer, to change tax map parcel on his review letter.
Okay.
Thank you. So, um, I have Mr. Dumack here tonight, the engineer for the project. Uh, this is a situation, there was a fire. The building is going to be relocated closer to the, to the road. There was a couple, um, zoning, uh, sections that they received relief from so that they could construct the, the new building closer to the road and also for additional parking. Uh, it's zoned HI, uh, and as far as Mr. Jones's review letter of January 10th, 2022, it's all will comply, there are no waivers requested, it's very straightforward. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Mr., any questions from you, Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Ms. Gallagher? Uh, Ms. Mullen, I'm sorry.
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
And Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
And I have none. Is there any public comment needed on this?
No public comment.
All right. Pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward.
What resolution would this be, Mr. Tekeeta?
Uh, Resolution 2022-4.
Dash four. Is there a motion?
No moves. Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Thank you for your talk, appreciate it.
Thank you. Item three, establish meeting dates and times for regular meetings of the Board of Supervisors. I guess that was confusing at our reorg meeting. We're gonna make the meetings, have always been the first and third Monday of the month, 7:00 PM. We got away from the first Monday, but we always kept it open in case we did need a meeting. So, I don't know how you want me to say that any clearer, that our regular meeting will be the third?
Correct.
And if needed, it will be the first?
And then we would have to advertise if we're going to meet on the first. So the meeting will be the third Monday of each month at 7:00 PM in this room.
Okay. That's that. Uh, is there a motion? Do we need to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then we're gonna reschedule the February meeting? Is that item number four?
Yes.
Uh, the, the third Monday ends up being President's Day, um, so we're looking to reschedule that, that date to either the 22nd or the 23rd. Uh, I'm sorry, and we can't do the 22nd, Plan Commission, I apologize. Plan Commission is on the 22nd, so we're, we are looking at the 23rd or the 24th.
That's Tuesday.
Wednesday and a Thursday.
Planning Commission meets one Tuesday, so we'd be Wednesday, I'm good with that.
Okay, Wednesday, is everybody good with Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Wednesday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM in this room.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Made? Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't understand why we'd reschedule President's Day but not Martin Luther King Day, which is today? Today's a holiday for the township, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, it doesn't matter. Item number five. Consider traffic signal easement agreement between KA at Fairless Hills LP, Maryland Square, Fairless Hills LLC, and Falls Township. This is this.
Uh, the, the, the board is being asked to consider, uh, traffic signal easement agreement with the Wawa and Falls Township. They are doing, uh, signal improvements, and we're gonna be required with, uh, to create an easement within our right-of-way. Uh, I have Derek Kennedy from RVE present, if he, if there's any questions regarding this.
Um, any questions for board members, Mr. Brasky?
No.
Ms. Mullen?
I'm sorry, who's present?
Uh, Derek Kennedy, he's our traffic engineer.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Kennedy, do you mind just summarizing the easement?
Yes, so, right now, the applicant is going through their PNDOT review process to highway occupancy permit. Uh, as part of that, they were required to do some traffic signal changes. Most of that was related to ADA ramps, push buttons. Um, so they're relocating some of the signal equipment on, on the corners. Uh, so the, the purpose of the easement is to accommodate the new signal equipment, so they're putting the equipment beyond their right-of-way in some cases. So the easement is essentially to allow the township to operate and maintain, you know, th- those signals, which is a current responsibility, which will be, you know, they'll be situated beyond the existing right-of-way.
Okay, very helpful, thank you. No more questions.
Mr. Galloway, any questions?
No que- no question.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, uh, what intersections are you talking about? So this is at the corner of Lincoln Highway and Arlene's. This is existing signal that will be modified as part of the Wawa redevelopment. Thank you.
Okay, um, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Is Mr. Jones with us tonight?
Yes, he's online.
Anything from you, Mr. Jones, on this?
Nothing on this, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I guess Mr. Clark has nothing.
No.
All right, um, this is just an agreement, right?
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Item six, consider bids for the sale of township surplus vehicles. Mr. Tekeeta, oh, Mr. Lawson's here for this one.
Good evening. I think that's all. So we had some vehicles that we had in surplus that we wanted to go out to bid, and we put them on Minnesota bid. Um, with the direction of Mr. Tekeeta, we went out and we got appraisals of the vehicles so we could say that we were selling them within how much they were worth. Um, before, we didn't know, and we probably were just selling them at, you know, cost of anything. So, um, we did a appraisal. The company came in, appraised all the vehicles, all the vehicles but one appraised to be within that range um, of the bids that we got. Uh, there was one other vehicle that was not claimed by the high bidder. He refused afterwards, he said, "Listen, I don't want it." So, we want, put that back on the Minnesota bid, and we're gonna see where that comes out. Uh, we also have another one that, you know, is up to the board about possibly donating to Pensbury. Um, so there's been talk about that, and the rest of all the vehicles are, um, ready to be picked up and paid for if it's all right with you guys.
Yep. So, any questions or comments, Mr. Brasky?
Um, I just, I just spoke to Mr. Tekeeta today and, and just said that maybe, you know, just so we're all clear going forward, that we know what the parameters are, you know what I mean? Like, I didn't know what you guys were looking for when we send them out to, for, to be, when they come here and get appraised, and then, you know, obviously, the, the appraisal number and the Minnesota bid number aren't the same.
No, I mean, there, there, there may be a possibility where the appraisal number comes in way above than what the Minnesota bid. At that point there, uh, Mr. Tekeeta and I talked, we're gonna try to put that on Minnesota bid a few times to try to get that price up. At the end, if that price doesn't come up to what the appraisal is, then we would have to make a decision whether or not to let that vehicle go or scrap it ourself.
Yeah, I'd like to see us create a parameter going forward so we know what that is, if it's a $1,000 window. Whatever, whatever, whatever you think it, whatever you guys think it should be, I just think that we should do it the same every time and, and have that window, and I think it's an awful lot of work for us to continue to put it on Minnesota bid when it's, in, in all theory, unusable to us. We've gotten 20 years out of most of these vehicles, if not more, you know?
Yeah, and I, and one of the other things is too, the vehicles are out there, they're taken out of service, but parts are taken off them every day. And we don't know what them parts are, the mechanic might just go out, pull a relay, put it in another car, so we're not spending money
Yeah.
to purchase new ones when we have a, one there, so, you know.
Yeah, I thought it was a good thing, I liked getting the appraisals, I just think, you know, I talked to Mr. Tekeeta about having a parameter there, so if it's, whatever, whatever, whatever you guys decide it'll be, but, you know.
They're all within the free's value, right?
This time, sure.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying going forward, if somebody's, you know, if the appraisal comes in at $4,000 and, and we only got up to $3,000, like, I just think, in my opinion, get rid of it, you know? Like, they're sitting back there, if it's $1,000, but whatever you guys decide, the attorneys decide, I think that, you know, come back to the board, but I think we should have, we should know what that, what that parameter is, that window.
That's fair. We, we could, um, establish a policy that if the price deviates a certain percentage from what the appraisal is, that the manager should pull it at that point in time and then, uh, rebid it, and if it comes back the same that second, that second or third time, then maybe you can let it go, but we can, we can put something together.
Yeah, you know, I just think if we, if a bidder meets that 80% or 75% threshold, like, we should just get, just release the car, you know?
This is the first we've ever had him appraised, right?
Right.
Correct.
Well, I know, it's, it's just one of my thoughts I had when I read the rest of it.
And I mean, I can say this too, this year has been a unique situation with used vehicles. Like, they're getting prices that I've never seen before. Um, you know, so it, it was unique, um, bidding, I feel, on a few of these cars.
Uh, thanks, Jay.
So what do you need from us, just to approve this?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and there's no public comment needed, I assume?
So just to give you a grand total, I don't know, um, with the sale of the vehicles, seven, I'm sorry, six of the vehicles, uh, we'll be bringing in $25,603.
Nice.
And then we put the other one out on Minnesota bid again to see what we get there, and then the, your decision on the other car, possibly donate.
All right. Any other comments from board members?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, um, the, the one from Victoria, I think it was in 2010, we did already make a decision on that, we were doing it at the Pensbury, correct, Matt?
No.
No, we, we did not make a decision on that.
I beg to differ, I think we did, and we took a vote on that with the, at a meeting.
I don't remember that.
I'll, I'll go through all, all our notes and just double-check.
Please do.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Okay, is there a motion then to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Absolutely.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, good work.
Item seven, consider purchase of vehicles for the Parks and Recreation, Fire Marshals, and Police Department. We'll start with, um, Parks and Rec. Buy an Ford Escape for $24,648.38.
That's correct.
All right, um, any questions from board members?
I have just one comment, one of a comment question for you. So during the budget season, I spoke to Betsy, um, as you're probably aware, as a board, we don't meet with, as a whole, with her, so I don't know if my comments have moved forward from just that meeting, but I spoke to her about, um, not supporting a vehicle for Parks and Rec, only because I feel as though we should be moving, these cars idle at that park. Your guys are working 12, 15, 16 hours a day, different shifts, and these cars are sitting down there. I thought that this is a great time and, like, for us to move towards electric vehicles, for that scenario. Not running fire calls, running police calls, doing code inspections, but for your guys to be patrolling the parks, I thought it was a great opportunity for the township to move to a charging station here, charging station at the park, and start buying patrol vehicles that are electric, but,
Okay.
I don't, this, we didn't get to that point, so, I guess, you know, I'm just trying, so.
Definitely, definitely something to look forward in the future. I think I presented that a few years back.
The future's now, though, like, like, it should be happening now, you know? We, I know we spoke briefly about this last year, Mr. Rocco, when he was on the board still, he was, you know, a big advocate for that. He didn't wanna see any more gas vehicles in the park, just sitting there idling all day, you know, or cruising through the park, so. I know the residents are doing it, but, you know, we can do our part and, and move to an electric vehicle.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I, I have, I have a question, Jeff, are, are you talking about, or would you be, uh, uh, oppose the table on this and have Brian get back to us with a cause for an electric vehicles?
No, I think we're okay because, you know, I spoke my piece to the finance director during budget, and if you guys all approved it in the budget, I think it's okay to approve it now, I didn't, I didn't do that, so. I think it's okay for you guys to move forward with this vehicle, but I think as a township, we should do our part, and this is a great, great way to do our part, and these vehicles that are small little four-cylinder cars that these guys are just, and women in the, you know, women and men are doing patrols in the parks, but.
No, I, I support the concept.
We can move forward with this vehicle.
I support the concept, it just sounds like you're, you're backing away from your position, that's all.
To, to address Mr. Brasky's concerns, uh, Brian and I will be meeting to go over, um, the, the electron, the electric car idea and see how we can have it budgeted for next year, because it would be a charging station, there's some infrastructure that has to be, uh, put in.
Right.
So we're gonna work that out as a project for next year.
Right.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Because I'm also in favor of car replacement, I've been speaking about that for, since I got on the board eight years ago, that this should be a no-brainer, we, we replacing cars, so. I'm okay too, I just, I need to speak, say that publicly because we need to move forward into that, you know, and, and have electric vehicles.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no questions.
All right, any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
So.
So moved.
Hold on, this is just for the Park and Rec car that you're taking a motion?
Okay.
We do them one by one.
Yeah, we have to do them one by one, right?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Galloway, can you poll the board?
Yes, Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeffrey Brasky.
Yes.
Jeffrey Dance.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right. Next we have the Fire Marshal's Office. Is he still here? Oh, yeah, there he is. Requested purchase of 2022 Ford Utility Explorer in the amount of $34,662 from New Holland Equipment. Uplift the vehicle at SKD Try-On's Emergency Outfitting for $8,234.45. Bringing the total cost of the vehicle purchase, $42,897.45, which is within the amount that we budgeted. Any questions or comments, Mr. Boraski?
Sure. Again, I just want to reiterate that, that I'm a big fan of the car replacement. You know, we were in a situation, right, years ago, chief, you know, we were in a situation where we had, we were working on stuff nonstop. So I do appreciate you guys staying on top of it. I think we have cop car coming up tonight too, right?
And we're almost caught up.
Right, okay. So, so I guess my question would be for you going forward for looking at 2023, are you caught up?
Uh, this is 2022, 23, we're probably okay. 24, we'll probably be coming back for one more.
Okay.
But I'm trying not to do it every year.
Right.
I'm trying to get into, you know, a replacement of say 10 years.
Okay.
So.
Like in your department, you think we'll get to a point where we're every four years or no?
Um.
Or that'll be hard to do?
I'd have to do the math.
The, the goal with the vehicle replacement program is to have them, each department rotate every four years, three or four years on vehicles.
I mean, I understand a bigger department like the police, it's probably, it's every year. I mean, it's rallying one, two, three cars every year, you know?
Yes.
But, I, no, I'm.
We're trying. We are trying.
Yeah, and it shows. I mean, maintenance rates and, and things like that. So, but I just want to make that comment.
Ms. Mullin, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, yeah, I have no problem supporting this. It's a, replacing a 2010, so absolutely, I, I support this.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes, no questions, thank you.
And I have none. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to purchase the vehicle for the Fire Marshal's Office?
Done.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you poll the board?
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeffrey Boraski?
Yes.
Jeffrey Dance?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right. Next we have some police vehicles. I believe this is three we're doing tonight, is that correct? Or five?
It's, it's a total of five. It's three patrol vehicles and two detective vehicles.
Okay. So we have the first one, we have to do these individually, Mr. Clark?
Um, not necessarily. Unless the particular board member is, wants them broken out, you can, you can vote to approve all of these for the police department as one vote.
Okay, um, what are these, anything special about any of these vehicles? I mean, they're just regular patrol vehicles?
Uh, two of them are K-9 vehicles, but other than that, it's three frontline patrol vehicles and two vehicles for our detective division. Uh, they're all part of our replacement plan, which on the sheet in front of me goes out to 2028. So barring catastrophes, we kind of know how long we expect a vehicle to last. Uh, the detective vehicles are very old and one of the K-9 vehicles is extremely old.
So two K-9s, one patrol and two detectives?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions or comments for Chief Whitney? Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Boraski?
I got one.
Go ahead.
Um, the difference between those cars and your car, is there, did we look at that? Like because yours was just a four by four base, did we look at getting an interceptor for your department or, I was just curious what the cost were. I, I, I'm having trouble just scanning through real quick and seeing what they were.
The interceptor? I'm not sure what that is.
The police package is a police interceptor. And in addition to that, there are differences in upfitting, cages, the blueprint system, you know, there are.
But, but you get yours outfitted too, right?
Yeah, mine has the police package.
You don't have to answer now, if we could just, just look at that to make sure that we don't jump in on his interceptor purchase and get another interceptor that we can make a Fire Marshal vehicle. I don't know if that's possible, but.
I don't understand what.
Well, you're buying a Ford Explorer, right?
The uti, they call it a utility.
Yeah, it's not the same thing.
It is, it's what they used to call the Explorer. It's the smallest, um, police package that we can get.
I didn't know if his interceptors were cheaper to purchase than, than the vehicle you're buying, that's all.
We can, and we can talk to Jason about whether or not there's a, a reduced cost for interceptors and especially.
I mean, in theory, they're the same vehicle, right?
Is the interceptor the utility?
The interceptor is pursuit rated and that may be a difference between.
Yeah, that, that's probably not as part of.
Like his base vehicle is almost $6,000 more, those police interceptors.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
Oh, 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 okay. I didn't know what his base was, yeah.
Okay. That's all I was asking, thanks.
I said no.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
And Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
And these detective vehicles are new vehicles?
Uh, they are new vehicles.
Okay. Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right. So what's the total amount on these police vehicles?
The total is $230,832. Uh, and that is what we budgeted in our 2022 capital budget for the police department.
Okay. So we're making that purchase, $230,132. Is there a motion?
Done.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you poll the board?
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeffrey Boraski?
Yes.
Jeffrey Dance?
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that everything then? We covered all the cars?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number eight, Geese Management. This used to be one of my favorite meetings of the year, when our friend used to come down and we've had some pretty good ones over the years.
You don't even bring them with you anymore to talk to us.
Uh, well, it's, it's different, uh.
Oh, okay.
Different company and Miss Mr. Marianni too.
Yeah.
When it comes to this. Proposal this year, um, in 2021, we used a company named Geese Police. Um, for 2022, we go out to bid every year on this program. I've done that since I've been here. And this year, um, we received a quote from Geese Chasers, the Southeast, Southeastern PA. They used to do the program in conjunction with SNS Wildlife before last year. Um, they do an all encompassing, encompassing program, just like the Geese Police. Uh, he came in with a better quote, he's a local guy, um, and he's really going to put a big emphasis on nest clearing. We didn't find any nests this year. I know there's nests there, so I'm, I'm proposing to go with, uh, Geese Chasers of Southeast PA for, for this year, for the geese services, management services.
Does he use dogs to sniff out?
Yes, yes. We've, we've used him for six years prior. He worked in conjunction with SNS, uh, for several years.
Oh, yeah, he used to just chase the geese.
Correct, correct. He's going to do it all now, yeah. So I think he's here too. He might be on soon, Scott, Mr. Savoy.
Yeah.
There he is. Hey, Scott.
All right. Well, any questions from board members? Mr. Boraski?
No.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes. Uh, so it looks like we did get a revised agreement correcting the.
I think there were some typos.
Yeah, the first one I looked at said summer of 2019. I see that that's been corrected. I just have a question because on the cover letter, uh, it indicates, uh, visits, daily visits for at least 12 weeks during nesting season and then year round daily visits.
Correct.
But the agreement makes, uh, references a 10 week period and after that obligations of the party shall cease.
That, that needs to be changed on that. I saw that today before, uh, earlier on, on the indemnity agreement.
Okay.
That's probably referencing the old agreement, so that would have to be changed.
Ms. Mullin, we are asking that this be approved subject to final review and approval by our office. There are still some things that need to be worked out.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's a whole lot you can learn about resident geese and geese and non-resident geese and harassing geese and addling eggs and using the dogs to chase them and train them.
That's right.
All right. Any questions from, uh, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Well, I kind of do still have a question. So which is it? Is it year round?
It's, it's a year, it'll be a year round program, yes.
And believe it or not, the amount of geese there now compared to what it was, say, eight years ago, there's hardly any.
Oh.
It was bad.
Probably about 20 to 30 residents, they're, they won't go anywhere, but.
They're smart.
We had over 100, 120 consistent, probably.
They can, you know, that's the geese, the dogs train them not to go in certain places, you know? They learn fast.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Me and my dog used to go down to Quaker Penn Park and we'd chase him out of the soccer field and within three days, they figured out to just land in the baseball field that was fenced in and we couldn't get them.
Yep.
All right. Um, any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Mr. Marianni's not with us anymore, but he'd be here telling us to use the frontline or whatever the product was, the paint, um, yeah. All right, with that, is there a motion then?
Done.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, can you poll the board, Mr. Galloway?
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeffrey Boraski?
Yes.
Jeffrey Dance?
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy as well.
Thank you.
When you go to Picehat, they'll probably have some stuff you can learn about geese management.
Probably not just geese.
Right.
Avian options.
Consider proposal for FX Brown for Act 101 Recycling Grant. This is a grant we get for basically recycling in the township, right, Mr. Tequila?
Yes, it is. Sorry, I turned it over. The, the fee that they're proposing is the same amount, $5,200, was proposed last year, they're proposing the same amount this year.
And you know how much the grant was we got last year?
Uh, we received a little over $50,000.
Right, so it's well worth it. Any questions, Mr. Boraski?
No.
Mrs. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
I have no questions. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
Done.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10, Crossing Guard Contract. Is this Chief Whitney or?
Uh, I can take this one.
Okay.
Uh, the board is being asked to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement between Falls Township and the Falls Township Crossing Guard Bargaining Unit. Proposed changes, all, uh, we agreed upon all the changes that were proposed by the board, um, and it's, this is in its final form. It has been reviewed both by, uh, my Clark's office and the attached labor attorney.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Mr. Boraski?
No.
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Nothing.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
And I have none. Is there any public comment needed?
Public comment, no public comment.
Anything from you, Mr. Clark?
Uh, no.
All right. And this is just an agreement, right?
Yes, it's the collective bargaining agreement.
Is there a motion?
Done.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Consideration of Authorization to Advertise Amending Ordinance, Chapter 174, Article 3. Ms. Galloway, I'm sure this is you, right?
If I could make one correction, it is, it is chapter 74, not, uh, not 174.
Okay.
Mr. Dance is actually drafted by one of my colleagues while I was out of maternity leave.
Oh, Mr. Clark?
Uh, this is, this is an ordinance to amend the retirement provisions of the county code. Mr. Whitney, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is something that PMRS has requested that we change in our code, uh, just to update it to reflect, uh, the current status of our plan with PMRS.
Yes, both, um, the, uh, both the, uh, Public Works Union and ASME have, are, they're in favor of this change.
Okay, and what does this mean for us, anything?
There's, there's no, uh, liability on our end, uh, so there, it's, it's cost neutral, uh, but it will provide in-service and non-service disability provisions in the pension program.
Any questions from board members?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
They have questions.
And I have no questions, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number twelve, we're going to table, is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item thirteen, appointments to various boards, councils, committees, and commissions. We put out on our social media that we were in need of help and we got a pretty good response on some things, I know one board where we need help is the zoning hearing board and we have a letter from Laney Strellick, who I've known for quite some time, she's, um, worked on our Parks and Rec Board, does a great job there, and I think she'll be great for the zoning hearing board, she's, uh, very outspoken, has no problem telling you what's on her mind, so I think she'd be a great fit. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Laney Strellick to the open seat on the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
I have a couple, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
This week, we had a letter, I had a resident reach out, we had a letter for Parks and Recreation Board, uh, by Mr. Mike Diaz, um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, appoint Mike Diaz to the Parks and Rec Board, it's a five-year term.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? All right.
One more.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And the planning commission has been looking for an alternate for a little while now. Um, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert McTagg to the planning commission, it's, uh, is the alternate a four-year, um, term as well? I know the regular members are four-year terms. I would say it is. Okay, let's go with that, right, four-year term, uh, as an alternate on a planning commission. Make that motion.
Okay, all second, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, all right. Any others?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Edgar Latuma to Parks and Rec.
All right, we all know Edgar, he served in the past on Parks and Rec, very active in the soccer club down there, he reps soccer, all-around good guy, I'll second that motion. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The, we had one more here.
Matt, does Rose reach out to the residents, like to follow the meeting?
Yes.
We do have a letter from Amanda Palmer interested in being appointed to the police pension board, so I'll make a motion to appoint Amanda Palmer, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, any others?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donna Petrecco to Historic Preservation Commission, she submitted a letter back in July.
Okay, I'll second that motion, um, motion made and seconded?
Well, it wasn't for, I didn't hear.
It's for Historic Preservation Commission. She sent the interest, you see it?
Oh, there's four absences, there's four?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? None. All right, any others, Jeff?
Hmm, I'm okay right now.
Mrs. Mullen, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Did pretty good tonight, Mr. Tequita, filling some of these vacancies.
Mr. Dents, um, I apologize, I'm going to ask you to go back to the Laney Strellick appointment and to do that by, uh, resolution.
Okay.
And that would be resolution twenty twenty-two dash five.
All right, um, I need to make another motion?
Yes.
To appoint Laney Strellick to the zoning hearing board.
Adopt a resolution twenty twenty-two dash five, appointing Laney Strellick to the zoning hearing board.
All right, is there a, I made the motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, none opposed. Next, we have item fourteen, escrow release requests.
The board is being asked to release the following escrows, Kinder Morgan, One Sinta Road for ten thousand dollars, it's a bond, uh, another release for Kinder Morgan at One Sinta Road for four thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents, also a bond, uh, we also have MM Metals USA at Fifty-three Middle Drive for two hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents, this is escrow release number five, all these, uh, escrow releases were reviewed by Jones Engineering Associates and the work was being completed to their satisfaction.
All right, any questions for Mr. Tequita? Mr. Boraski?
No.
Mrs. Mullen?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion to approve the escrow releases?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Item fifteen, consider bare root tree offer from Pennsylvania Historical Society.
The board is being asked to consider the purchase of thirty trees as part of the Tree Vitalize Program, uh, in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, the township has done similar bare root tree programs in prior years, planning them throughout the township, over six hundred and twenty-one trees have been purchased through the Tree Vitalize Program by Falls Township.
That's a lot of trees, any questions from board members?
No.
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 Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I have a question, uh, the Sherry, the Shade Tree Commission, we, um, have, uh, a lot of, um, people donate trees today, can we use some of those trees in lieu of this, uh, fifty-five dollars apiece at sixteen fifty, or are they special kind of trees?
I don't know if we have people donating trees.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We do.
Uh, when people, uh, uh, come in for zoning and they ask for, uh, variances in regards to that, they donate trees, so I was wondering if we can use some of those trees for this, or are they a special type of tree?
I, I know, I know sometimes that we, um, that we ask to get maybe some trees planted in lieu of some things, but I don't know if.
We have a stockpile.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we have any at this moment, I'm not, that I'm aware of, I wasn't a representative of the Shade Tree Commission for a while and I don't remember there being anything.
We can look into that, but, right? When, um.
Mr. Jones, um, I know you were, uh, talking with, I believe, TiVo or Tavo back in, um, by Kreske Road, I knew they donated in lieu of, uh, what was that settlement?
A lot of times, since, since our tree replacement ordinance was passed recently, applicants who remove trees are obligated, who are not on a residential property are obligated to, to replace trees, sometimes they offer, I believe, fee in lieu, um, sometimes they offer trees themselves, I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Palmer, what the exact number for Tavo was, but there are other projects, um, that fit that requirement, um, some of them have the option, based on that ordinance, to provide shrubs instead of the trees, so it's kind of, some moving parts to that, but we certainly could work with, um, the manager to, um, or, or the Park and Rec gentleman, whoever controls that, to, um, to try to have tree replacements, replacements that make sense for that type of program.
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of them pay the fee in lieu of, right, Ms. Gallagher?
I, I think, I think almost everyone pays the, the fee in lieu of, I don't know if anyone actually gives us the trees, and it's when someone is seeking a waiver, or as Mr. Jones says, when they cut down a certain amount of trees on their property and they cannot replace them because of the development, uh, there will be a fee in lieu of, and that allows us to, uh, to plant trees other, other places within, within the township.
So we would use them fees for, say, bare root tree program?
Correct.
Okay.
That money just goes into the general fund?
Correct, it's supposed to be used for the, for placement of trees.
All right.
And John, I had the same idea, just so you know, and I came to the conclusion that we could still use thirty more trees, no matter how many we have stockpiled, and I have suggestions exactly where they should go.
Independence Drive?
Okay.
Okay, so, we have thirty trees that cost a fifty-five dollars each for a total cost of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all, um, uh, you want to pull the board, Mr. Galloway?
Yes, Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeffrey Boraski.
Yes.
Jeffrey Dents.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen, consider resolution establishing rates for land development review. Mr. Clark, you want to take us through this?
If I knew what it was, I, I would, but since I don't.
Mr. Tequita, can you pick up the slack for Mr. Clark?
No, I think I'm already.
Mr. Dents, I can now.
Oh, you can do it, Ms. Gallagher, thank you.
This is, um, part of the requirements of the municipality's planning curve, that, um, rates that are charged to developers for various services the township provides have to be set forth in a resolution, that's all this is, how to find the rates that are charged for various services provided to developers in the township.
All right, and these are rates that we established at the reorg meeting, right?
Correct.
And what resolution will this be?
It's twenty twenty-two dash six.
Six, okay, because this says four, but I know we made two more tonight, so is there a motion, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash six?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? None. What's that?
I don't know.
Was someone opposed? No, right? Okay.
Tough tonight.
All right, Jeffrey?
Consider maintenance agreement between Falls Township and Bristol Township for Magnolia Drive. Mr. Lawson?
So back in the nineties, there was an agreement between Bristol Township and Falls Township for the maintenance of Magnolia Drive, the lower portion, it's around seventeen hundred feet, um, through the years, um, someone had lost the agreement, now, we have the resolution, we have everything, I know it was in Bristol when I left, but it's not there now, so basically, this is just reaffirming the agreement that we had, um, same thing, everything is going to go through, they'll maintain the roadway, we'll maintain the drainage and, uh, trees and grass on the one shoulder, and there are no streetlights or anything, they're on the Bristol Township side, so they'll maintain them, and it's just basically putting the agreement on paper again, so we both have a copy.
Any questions for Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, so there's no monetary value?
So there'll be liquid fuels money, I, I don't know if the exact price came out, um, I was told it was three hundred dollars, but I think it was three thousand dollars a year for that portion, but that'll be used, liquid fuels money is used for, uh, maintaining the road, so we won't be able to use it for maintaining the trees or the grass or anything, so it would go to Bristol Township. For snow removal and, uh, repair maintenance, all.
Yeah, is, um, is Bristol approving the same agreement?
Yes.
They already signed it.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's just that someone misplaced the agreement, we had the resolution, we had the lawyer notes, everything back and forth, just the original document was misplaced.
Gotcha, thanks, Jay.
Ms. Gallagher? Ms. Mullen?
No. I have to call for it.
That's twice. Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
And I have none, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
My name's spelled wrong on this agreement, I don't know who wrote, wrote this, but is there a motion to approve the agreement between Falls Township and Bristol Township?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item eighteen, minutes, December twentieth and January third, any questions, comments, corrections? From board members?
None.
None?
No.
All right, excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen, I know it's hard doing it by way of Zoom, I'm sure, especially when we're all mumbling, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the December twentieth and January third?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that takes us to the engineer's report, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members, as you can see, from the month of December, we had one new land development application, which is really a sketch plan for a building addition at the Hyosin site down in the, uh, KTC, we had one residential earth disturbance application and two, um, cell tower altercation, alteration applications, um, updates are identified in red and some highlights are as follows, the MLH project, um, is going to begin as soon as possible, I've had a lot of activity with the applicant's engineer, um, going through the developer agreements and final mylaws, they had a couple of minor changes that they were doing internally, um, but they're being considered field changes, so that project will start likely within the next three or four weeks, the MM Metals project is completed, um, they had, uh, an issue with establishing grass in one of the stormwater basins, but that's been resolved, um, the marking construction is another project that's coming to construction very soon, um, same as the, uh, MLH, they're in developer's agreements and mylaws, uh, working out the dot and the final i's and crossing the final t's, the Lincoln Storage Project is finally under construction, we had a pre-construction meeting early January, and that is underway, um, the Raising Canes Project, again, um, nearing construction, a lot of activity with the applicant on developer agreements and mylaws, and then, um, the Hyosin I mentioned, it's a sketch plan, um, that received favorable recommendations from the planning commission, and so they chose not to present to the board of supervisors and are going to submit land development plans, there are no notable updates to the earth disturbances, um, other than the two stockpiles will come off in the report for next month, because those stockpiles were utilized for the fill work that's going on down for building number three for North Point, in terms of the township projects, uh, the twenty-one twenty-three road program that is Elder Berry Drive Construction has been put on hold due to weather, and I believe the contractor had a bout with COVID, um, but they anticipate restarting that project, um, late February or early March, um, everything is in, uh, buttoned up in safe condition, uh, the Race Drive Culvert Project is in the preliminary engineering and survey phase, on schedule for construction, um, late summer, mid to late summer, when the stream is at its lowest flow, uh, those are my updates, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, any questions or comments from Mr. Jones?
No.
No.
Mrs. Mullen? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
All right, I have no questions, thank you, Mr. Jones, that takes us to the bill list, we have a bill list totaling one million seven hundred ninety-one thousand seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents, about one million one hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty, that is payroll, we have a significant payment to the workers' compensation coverage, almost ninety thousand, um, some big escrow releases, and just to note, the escrow releases, even though they're coming out, are not township money, that's money paid by developers, any questions or comments on the bill list?
No.
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 None, all right, any public comment needed?
Public, no public comment.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeffrey Boraski.
Yes.
Jeffrey Dents.
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you.
All right, uh, item twenty-one was our executive session, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Dents, uh, prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, potential litigation, and matters involving a collective bargaining agreement.
All right, that takes us to item twenty-two, Police Department Report, Chief Whitney, you're up.
Thank you, Rich, would you mind keeping my, uh, PowerPoint?
What's that? I didn't hear.
We're both on the same laptop there, if you could queue mine, um, my regular December report, uh, is before you, the only thing I want to point out on it is, uh, the county is handing out COVID-nineteen test kits at three locations, the lower, um, county location is at Sesame Place, that's going to start this Wednesday, the nineteenth, uh, for the public, it'll run from ten in the morning to six in the evening, it'll continue for the following two Wednesdays, uh, it's a drive-up kind of routine where people will be waiting in line and, uh, will be able to get test kits from Bucks County free, uh, the rest of my report is kind of standard stuff, so, uh, what you have before you on the screen is the annual report for twenty twenty-one for the police department.
Is that going to work, or do you need me to?
It was working. No, it's not working. Oh, what are you going to do?
Do you have to hit anything here?
I don't think so. No, you know what, we try to do these, you can't, this is why we can't have nice things.
Right?
If, uh, if you could, if you could advance for me, Rich.
It's not advancing, those.
That's probably what happened, it stuck, I think we need to.
You let Rich mess with it.
I'm not touching it.
This is why we can't have these things, we need to fire the police, it's terrible.
It's frozen.
Want me to go get one of the tech guys? Think we need a tech guy. I know they're listening, there we go.
Yeah.
Just saved the day.
I'll start hitting it with my fist.
I did, nothing happened.
I think it froze.
Yeah, there we go, so.
Here we go.
There we go.
But that's on the screen.
All right, there we go. All right, thank you, so, moving on, um.
Don't touch it.
So I was hired by the board to make some changes in the department, and if there's anybody in law enforcement, uh, will tell you the same thing, there's two things cops hate, that's the way things are in change, um, so one of the things we talk about at our monthly staff meetings, are, are the reasons that we change things, um, if, uh, if anybody in the board kind of hears about any of the changes we're ma, we're making in the police department and has any questions, I would encourage you to contact me directly, I'll be happy to talk about it, but the goal of the change are to improve the working conditions for everybody, uh, to better ensure everybody's success and to make the department more efficient, so I didn't invent this, I'd love to take credit for it, but it's one of the things, again, we talk about at staff meetings, it's a, um, kind of a, a matrix of if your police department is accomplishing these seven dimensions of policing, uh, you're in our field, uh, considered to be doing your job well for the community, um, so they kind of speak for themselves, and I can send this electronically to the board if you'd like afterwards, uh, this is from Gordon Graham in Lexington, uh, the five pillars in any successful organization are people, policy, training, supervision, and discipline, uh, these are five things that we've concentrated a lot on in twenty twenty-one, uh, in order to kind of get us on the right track and, and sustain operations in the police department in a way that makes sense, in twenty twenty-one, we had twenty thousand three hundred and thirty-one calls for service, uh, among those were eleven thousand and fifty-six traffic crashes, eighty-one drug overdoses, eight of which were fatal, and more than twenty-seven hundred medical calls, so that's our overdose chart from twenty-ten forward, you can see by the figures, uh, in twenty twenty-one, that we did decline, as we have been declining to some extent since twenty eighteen, uh, it does go up and down a little, but we haven't had that few, and, and the loss of any life is horrible, but we haven't had that, uh, number of fatal overdoses since twenty thirteen, so in almost ten years, uh, we're finally seeing a decline in that, uh, we administered fifty-four doses of Narcan in twenty twenty-one, We administered 54 doses of Narcan in 2021. We pulled together some calls for service just to show some trends. If you look all the way to the left, those are catalytic converter thefts. The gray is 2019, the orange is 2020, and the blue is 2021, so you can see we really crested 96 catalytic converter thefts in 2021. Pursuits also went up, that's the next column over. There were 13 in 2020, up from six the year prior, there were 22 last year. And the other metrics here, robberies, burglaries, stolen autos, and shootings, kind of have gone up and down a little, but are relatively constant. Looking at the data coming from our calls for service and the fact that pursuits have been up, we purchased additional stopsticks at the end of 2021. This year, we'll have 75% of our patrol fleet outfitted with them. There's a little bit of a danger in deploying these things, but they can deflate the tires of vehicles involved in traffic pursuits. It's something that we've had in the Police Department for the last 20 years or so, they've kind of fallen into disrepair, and there were probably maybe four or five cars that had them before we made it a priority, looking at our pursuit statistics in the last year. Last year also, we had to move our range to where it is located now, Byles Island, that is kind of a work in progress, but it is open. So our shooting range has moved to a new location. It's used by our officers and officers from other local agencies to maintain proficiency in our use of firearms. We did have a bunch of new programs in 2021. We had two co-responder programs, which I'll get to. We tried to increase our media output by having that blotter come out on Crime Watch on a regular basis, just to kind of let everybody know, you know, kind of what's going on in town every week. And we launched a Memorial Marker Program that we began in September of 2021. Our Falls Township Supporting Recovery Program is the first of its kind in the county, pairing a police officer with certified recovery specialists. Those are our two certified recovery specialists there, Laura Craig and Susan Daly. They started in February 1st, and their mission is connecting individuals with substance use issues to treatment. We did begin a new partnership, always trying to kind of move things forward, with Levittown Fairliss Hills, that's going to begin this year, which will have our CRSs riding with the Rescue Squad, once a week at this point, to kind of expand our area of operation a little bit, and try to get interaction with more people and give more people help in this program. We also have a Human Services Co-Responder Program. Those are our two Human Services Co-Responders there. Kara Gedzinski is on the left, she works out of our building, and Jessica Manzo works out of Middletown. Their program just started on December 20th, and their mission is to follow up on incidents or respond to incidents involving some mental health component or domestic violence component. We have our Crime Watch Daily Blotter that I mentioned, the Memorial Marker Program, which will memorialize individuals who were killed in traffic crashes in Falls Township. We've got a new MDT system from the county in October. The last system looked like DOS, it was from 1999, it was an extremely old system. The county worked for years to get this new one up and running, it is still a work in progress, but it is an improvement from the old system. We participate in PennDOT-funded aggressive driving waves, that's where we engage in traffic enforcement in Falls Township, and we're at least partially reimbursed for the overtime by PennDOT for these activities. With the solicitor and the board's help, we had some ordinance changes in 2021 that are worth noting. One was to include precious metals to cover scrap companies that buy catalytic converters in town, and the other was our human trafficking ordinance, to try to impact human trafficking and curtail that in Falls Township. We've made an effort to have more visibility at schools, both a presence in school zones, which continue to be a concern for the crossing guards and the parents when their kids are going to and from admission and dismissal from school, and school walkthroughs. And Oxford Valley Elementary has for years been a concern for parents and school staff, there are two crossings there. For some reason, there was only one crossing guard there forever. We were able to work with both our finance department here in the township and Pencebury, and budget for a second crossing guard to be placed at Oxford Valley Elementary School, which is actually going to start this week. So we'll finally have a crossing guard at each crossing point there at Oxford Valley. Out of the 20,000 calls, this is the only one I'll really draw attention to, we did have an officer-involved shooting in August. Our officers followed policy and Pennsylvania laws, and were reviewed by the Bucks County DA's office. The prior instance where we had one of those is back in '02. We had an extremely increased focus on supervision training in 2021, both in-house and through training seminars. We also partnered with the Sheraton Hotel to host training. We conducted crowd control training at the beginning of 2021, and trained the entire department in crowd control principles, and issued them equipment, so that if we had protests or other crowd control issues, we were trained and equipped to handle them. These are among the schools we hosted from a company called Street Cop Training, one called Street Academy, one called Mastering Pennsylvania Search and Seizure, Social Media and Open Source Investigations, and we hosted a school called Supervising Patrol Critical Incidents, which was required in attendance for all command and supervision personnel in the Police Department. We trained four additional officers as EMTs, bringing the total number of trained officers in the department to 16. We had some required reading, you know, to become a learning organization, we're kind of constantly striving to improve ourselves, so that's not just training seminars and, you know, things we can do online, and in and out of the building, but it's reading, so we pass these books around, and they were required reading. And along the same lines of understanding how to respond to crises and critical incidents, we had training throughout the first half of the year for supervision and risk assessment, which is calling out the SWAT team, tactical operations, critical thinking, managing dynamic tactical problems, creating a common operational picture, the use of time in critical incidents, lessons learned from protests, and like I said, these, all these things are focused on how to handle a crisis or critical incident, and how to manage such an incident at a supervision label, level rather, before you're relieved by a higher chain of command. In addition, every month, at least twice, supervisors conduct decision-making exercises and roll call. Sometimes these are videos that are reviewed, sometimes they're written scenarios, but they're basically discussed as a group. We look to see what other departments have done that were good and bad, and discuss these incidents, so that we have an idea of how to handle some of these things before they actually come up. Just a note on technology and training, we have trained officers to be certified as instructors in de-escalation, so we can conduct that training in-house, and we've conducted additional training in the use of less lethal weapons. This year in 2022, by the way, we are doing less lethal weapons training every quarter. We typically shoot every quarter, and then we conduct less lethal training on an equal footing with our range training. We trained officers in traffic incident management, with the design to improve safety of our first responders and the public on roadways. We changed some of the aspects of our graphics to include a linear aspect, which directs traffic when taking a blocking position. We upfit our vehicles to include a command and control platform called MACH. Now we have, thanks to the board, by the way, we have watch guards this year in all the cars. We have the blueprint system, which controls not only the siren, but the lighting, which lowers the flash pattern of the lighting when the vehicle's in park to be less distracting to drivers driving down the road. It reduces the intensity of the emergency lighting package at night, so it's less distracting, and so that drivers can see people outside the vehicle and not be blinded by the lights. It's got pretty powerful speakers mounted on the push bumper, that if you are responding lights and siren, and you hit a button on your steering wheel, it creates this low-frequency siren and flashes all the forward-facing emergency lights in the police car white, to try to gather people's attention. We have equipment in the back of the vehicle organized in drawers, so it's not kind of just floating around like it used to, so that when we need to get to emergency equipment under pressure and stress, we can do so. We have, actually, the box in my office, we were donated funds by Waste Management to help fund the Haas Alert System, which I've been trying to figure out a way to fund for the last two years. This is an electronic notification system that will be outfitted into our fleet and the fire marshal's fleet. It's used in some areas around here in the fire service, we will be the first police department to use it, and it provides an alert directly to the navigation system in someone's vehicle on their dashboard, warning them that either an emergency vehicle is approaching, or that an emergency vehicle is at a scene ahead, to give them time to move over. It's kind of a 21st century siren, doesn't rely on noise. Our duty pistols and rifles were due to be replaced in 2021, the rifles are in place in the vehicles, the pistols have been ordered, we're waiting for them to come in. The policy manual is kind of a living, breathing document, it was kind of dated when I took over, so it's in the process of being redone. We did redo the entire policy book to make it more gender-neutral. When it was written, it was kind of slanted towards male gender, and we had that corrected during 2021. But there are still policies that are being updated by the Policy Committee, and this will continue into this year. We have an annual training plan for 2022, where we've created training pipelines for different officers' specialties, including supervision, but also SWAT, EMTs, accident reconstruction, and so on, where those officers will be sent to certain specific schools, so they have a commonality in training. This year, and thank you again to the board for helping fund this, we will be implementing body-worn cameras, in addition to having watch guard units in all of the vehicles. This will allow us to be keeping pace with emerging technology in law enforcement, and, you know, have the ability to record not only views of incidents from the vehicle, but actual incidents in the field with the officer wearing the body camera. Our Youth Aid Panel is now staffed and running. This is a diversion program for youthful offenders who commit nonviolent crimes. Just a note, our retired officer, Yo Gottenberg, passed away this year in October. He retired in 2015 after 31 years of service. John Jaeger retired last year in 2021. He was with us for 35 years, I think everybody knows John and his many community-oriented programs. We have a new police officer, Dean Sticler, that we hired in 2021. He has graduated field training and is now assigned to a patrol squad. It is extremely difficult to recruit and retain police officers, not just locally in Bucks County, but everywhere. It is a nationwide problem. Very few people are committed to law enforcement as a career, it's just hard to find good people, so we were lucky to hire Dean and have him complete field training. Our Youth Police Academy was held, we didn't hold it in 2020 because of COVID, we managed to get this in in the summer last year. It's a 10-day program that introduces middle-school and high-school-aged children to law enforcement. Forty-one cadets graduated this year. We really do this at little or no cost to the families that send their kids to us, we charge them, you know, enough money to buy lunch on the last day, that's a catered lunch, instead of a bagged lunch, pretty much everything else, you know, we cover, so it's a nice program that we do for the community. It was nice to get that in last year.
Is that going to happen again for 2022?
Yeah, we'll definitely be on for 2020. I mean, unless something really bad happens with COVID and the schools close, as long as we have access to the school facilities and it's safe, we're going to do it again, absolutely.
You know, when you advertise, and I've had a couple people recently reach out.
It's always mid-July.
Well, I was.
So, no, the actual academy's always mid-July, so the advertisement should usually start sometime in February, March timeframe.
So soon, get applications out there, probably through Facebook or something like that.
Yep, yep, and they'll be on our website. We participated in National Night Out this year. Our officers had an opportunity to interact with the public for this family-friendly event, including a canine demonstration. And we will do more in 2022. We're definitely not standing still in the Police Department, there's ways that we can continue to innovate, find new ways to help people who need assistance in our community. The men and women who serve with me will continue to do so, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Whitney, excellent presentation. Any questions for Chief Whitney?
I just wanted to follow up on that, Youth Police Academy. Since Officer Jaeger retired, do we have another officer that's been taking the lead and is in charge?
Yeah, we took advantage of knowing that John was leaving last year to transition Sergeant Callahan and Officer Fisher into that role. So they worked with John last year to kind of prepare for and run the academy, so they'll be taking over this year.
Okay. That's all I have.
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Great report, no questions.
And I have none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 23, Presentation of Fire Marshal's Year-End Report.
Got them on the same night, huh?
Well, yeah. Let's see if it'll work now. Uh, I went back, I don't know why I did that. Why does it keep doing that?
Exit out of that.
Exit out of this? Where did I go? Here.
We're back up. Turn down the screen or something.
Now, what's going to, if I hit this, is it going to do anything? Okay, it is working, so.
This one.
Nope. That one's open. That one's open here. All right. I think it's already open, it's just minimized. There you go. Okay, so. That should be it, and if I go like this.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if this works. I prepared my year-end report for 2021 for the department, and it is not scrolling. I'll get you here. Close it all, I guess, and reopen it. That's you, right? Yep. Are they moving? Okay, it's moving now, that's good, because that'll be the second one. Okay. All right, thank you. As I'm sure you know, the department consists of five full-time employees, myself, three inspectors, and a clerk. For the year, we conducted 27 fire investigations. We also conduct plan reviews of all the different alarm systems that go into, and why isn't that showing? It should be on the screen, it's not. It's changing here, but not there.
That'll be great.
Get you going here. Do you want a chair?
I'm good.
Now it's up there again.
Let's do this. It's yours, right?
Yep.
Stuff fresh.
It's the one over, there you go.
Mr. Dance is ready to entertain a motion to the jury.
That's the one that you want to see before. All right. Then you're going to do this.
Jay, you're on that, sorry.
And it's moving? Yep. Okay, it wasn't.
No, he better not be.
I'll try it again. There you go. Okay. That's it. Thank you, sir. Okay. As I said, we did, we did 27 inspections last year. We also do plan reviews for all sprinklers, suppression, fire alarms. These are just some of the responsibilities. We also do budget presentations, and everyone in my office, with the exception of the clerk, responds to fire calls during the day to one of the volunteer fire companies. Some of the inspectors' responsibilities, they obviously conduct fire prevention and life-safety inspections of every business, hotel, motel, and school, and also daycares within Falls Township. They respond to the fire calls also as dispatched. We follow up on every fire call from the night before to make sure we don't get reoccurring false alarms, and that all the systems are up and operating properly. They inspect the, they inspect all the detection systems, make sure everything's running properly. We do training, we do fire prevention. They also, in my absence, will perform cause and origin investigations, and any other inspections as needed. For the year 2021, we did 976 inspections of every business. You'll see a graph on the next slide here. You can see it's gone up. 2019, I attribute that mainly to the fact that we had two full-timers and one part-timer. Once we had three full-timers in 2020, we found a lot more businesses that had come into the township without the proper UNOs, and now this year has been basically the same as 2020. We did 272 follow-ups from every fire call from the night before, or even a day before, and we do that to make sure all the fire alarm systems are up and operational, no one shut anything down because it was a problem, make sure all the sprinkler systems are up. This is the follow-ups that we do from every fire call. You'll notice 2020, we plummeted mainly because a lot of businesses were closed, and we couldn't get in them, to do follow-ups from the day before. We're back up, it's been fairly steady, you know, 250, 275, for the last, I guess, four or five years. During the day, the inspectors and myself, we all respond to one of the fire companies in the township to help supplement the volunteers. This is most important, because daytime is when manpower is critical. There's just not the help out there that we've had, you know, every year it seems like it gets less. These are the numbers of fire calls, and just so you know, these are fire calls that only happen during the day. All these firefighters listed here run calls 24/7, but you'll see the number of calls that they went to during business hours, Monday to Friday, eight to four round figures. The numbers... All these firefighters listed here run calls 24/7, but you'll see the number of calls that they went to during business hours, Monday to Friday, eight to four round figures. The numbers, you'll notice, some are higher than others. It just means that some of the companies didn't have as many calls, simply put. In the last couple of years, Public Works has joined forces. They also respond to fire calls during the day. Currently, we have five Public Works employees. You'll notice the last one is a little lower. I don't believe he had a full year in 2021. I think he came in somewhere during the year, but the rest of them are pretty consistent. And some of these, they'll go to different stations or a combination, like Brian Word, he goes to a couple of different companies. We do, for fire alarm systems, we do inspections which normally include a rough and a final. Rough, making sure that all the wires are properly run, that everything is mounted in proper spacing, that it matches the schematics that they submitted. And then a final to make sure that devices that were installed work. Sprinkler systems normally takes three inspections, a rough, a hydrostat, and a final. We'll go out and for the same reasons, check the rough, make sure they didn't run it, you know, some crazy way, that it's properly secured, matches the plans. Hydrostat, a sprinkler has to hold 200 pounds for two hours. We make sure it's holding pressure before they put water in it, so we don't have false alarms and, you know, water dripping all over. And then a final, make sure it activates and it notifies the alarm company. These are some of the other inspections that mainly the inspectors do. Tenant fit-outs for businesses going on, undergoing renovations, code enforcement spot, the suppression which we spoke about, fire pumps, liners, and any complaints that residents may have that involve life safety. In 2021, we started doing some pre-planning. We got through a grant, something called Blazemark. It's a pre-planned tool, software. The guys have recently started doing that. They got eight done last year, and they started with the high hazards, some of the hotel motels, and we're going to continue to increase the amount that get done. This was the numbers for last year. They did the hotel motels, which totaled five, our building, the elementary school, one elementary school, and a new plant that was opening down on Canal Road. By year-end, we should be into the schools. We would like to get all those done and the hospital. And then we'll meet with the fire companies. We'll set up meetings that we can share this software that they can put on their own computer so they'll have pre-plans at the tip of their fingers during an emergency. One of the big things that we take pride in is fire prevention and safety for the kids. Mainly happens around Fire Prevention Week. We'll visit every school in township to make sure that their fire prevention drills go accordingly. We'll offer any suggestions we may have. We do a lot of fire prevention and safety training. We do that for businesses, schools, daycares. Daycares are required by law to have a safety training every year, which we'll go to each site and train them. We do live fire extinguisher training. You saw the smoke simulator trailer that was in the previous slide. We take that out, and kids really like it. It's a non-toxic smoke. It's very helpful for kids to see what really happens because it acts like smoke. We'll put them inside, they'll see it actually drop down. We teach them to get down and crawl, get low and go, as they say, and we help them get out a window if they ever had to do it at home. This is big right now, smoke detectors. We receive our smoke detectors through Channel 6. They do a save-a-life program every year. We went, this year we went to 15 different locations and installed 71 smoke detectors. I wish I'd said 100 locations and 1,000 smoke detectors. We go to anyone that calls and we'll install them for them. They're free. It's free installation, no reason not to have a smoke detector, especially with the recent tragedies up in Quakertown and the Bronx. We share it, we stress it, we advertise it. We did some today, as a matter of fact, in a, from a call last night, person didn't have, they had smoke detectors, but they were starting to beep and they were old, so we went out and changed them for them for free. As I spoke, Fire Prevention Week, we'll visit every school, and we also get every fire company, and not just in Falls Township, we go outside of Falls. For anyone that requests, especially the smoke trailer, it's a well-received tool, and we get a ton of requests for it. Last year, 20, and also 2020, we're a little, as everyone knows, pandemic. A lot of places didn't have fire prevention or did it on a much, much smaller scale. Last year, and that was due to COVID, we went to, we took it to five different places. We also take it to our Touch a Truck event, our Family Fest, anywhere it's requested, we'll get it there. As I spoke, we do the fire safety training. We do live extinguisher training. Last year, we went to six different locations and did 57 people. That's a little low. We had some places that didn't give us their numbers for certificates yet. I have to still type them up. So it's slightly higher, but, you know, it is what it is. People call, we go, and we enjoy doing it. Some of the other assignments the department has taken on, we seem to be taking on more and with the same amount of people, which is not necessarily a bad thing. The township surveillance cameras, our key card access, building telephone system, we've done, someone has been assigned that in my department, and they've taken on those responsibilities and along with our food bank that we started a couple of years ago. We also maintain all the medical equipment in the vehicles, in our, in the building here, which could involve the emergency lighting, et cetera, and we're always doing continuing ed. We've recently started bringing a continuing ed in here. We bring in outsiders, it's all sponsored through the Community College and the Bucks County Public Safety Training Center. Some of the trainings we did this year were arson awareness, automatic detection, building construction, and plan reviews. And we also, we invite the police officers, our code enforcement, outside agencies, other fire departments, and fire marshal's offices. This slide just gives you an idea of what we bring in. The department last year brought in over $233,000, and the graph shows, it's been pretty stagnant, I guess, for the last couple of years. 141,000 in fire permits, or fire inspections, rather. That's what every business paid to have us come out and inspect. Fire permits, that's for every fire alarm, sprinkler, suppression that was installed. And then fire reports and reviews for anyone that requests my fire reports and things of that nature. That's a small figure. But the total was over $23,000, helped supplement the department. This is the run call for the last couple of years. Excuse me. Falls went up by 4%. Feral Hills went up by 10%. Levittown had a 28% increase. It's hard to determine what exactly were the reason for some of these increases, but we attribute some of it to COVID, again. People working from home, we're getting more false alarm, or careless cookings and false alarms in the home. Also with three guys, we've been on top of a lot of companies, making sure they're bringing their systems up and installing systems that are needed, and, thank you. And the new buildings that are undergoing renovations have to bring them up to current codes, which unfortunately sometimes will have false alarms, but we are getting more buildings protected. It's just a graph, three volunteer fire companies. You can see they're semi-stable, but it's still a lot of fire calls when you think about all this is being manned by volunteers. Something we started this year that I thought was, if it saves one person, it was well worth the startup. Ben Salem has a mobile stroke unit. They call it an MSU. It is, for lack of a better word, it's a hospital on wheels. For someone that has cardiovascular, a stroke, a CVA, this unit can take a person in, put them into a CAT scan in the back of the unit, has telemed where a doctor is actually looking on a screen at the patient in the back of the truck, and can order necessary drugs that can save a person's life. Now, the only one in the area is coming out of Ben Salem. I realize it's a distance, but if for some reason the ambulance that's coming to Falls Township gets delayed or something happens on scene that it takes them a little longer, this unit is being dispatched at the same time. If they're not needed, they send them home. But if they get there and they're needed and it makes a difference in one person, it was well worth putting it into service. We worked together with the local rescue squad in Ben Salem to put this on what they call the BOSS card, so it's dispatched every time there's a stroke. To my knowledge, it's been dispatched. I don't know that I have any stats to say, yeah, you know, we know it made the difference in someone's life, but sooner or later, I'm sure it'll happen and it'll be well worth the call. Some of the projects we have going on and things that, some of the accomplishments, we replaced a vehicle, you heard that in the call, in the budget portion, and we replaced a vehicle. We've taken all our inspections that the guys are doing on the street, and we've put them into electronic form. They're working off tablets instead of paper and pencil and having it translated onto a computer when they get back. Saves time. We talked about the training that we're doing. We're currently soliciting bids for surveillance cameras at the community park to increase security down there, and Mr. Tequita is currently designing building, future building renovations that everyone's been trying to add any of their input. The food drive, started that a couple of years ago, I'm pretty proud of that. To date, we've, this year we took in over 12,000 pounds of food, about 12.5. It's an estimation, obviously. We have four sites we're delivering it to. Whenever we have a sufficient load, we'll take it to a site. One of the sites actually weighs the food as we bring it in, so that's where we came up with the number. Based on their numbers, multiplying it by four, we try and keep it about the same amount of food delivered. And one of my, you know, key top or key thoughts is, people think about this during the holidays, but people are hungry all year. So we've delivered this, it's been well-received by the food banks, and we come and pick it up, no contact. All you have to do is call us. We've had a great relationship with Waste Management. North Park, their neighborhood group has done it. Some folks on Cher and Lions Drive, and also Palm Lane and Pine, we'll just name a few. These folks are donating every month. If you wanted to pick up a food, that's our email address, that's the phone number, we're happy to come get it. Smoke detectors, again, I can't say it enough, if you need one, if they're out of date, we have ones that have lithium batteries that are good for 10 years. Call us, call me, call, or send me an email, we'll come out and put them in for free. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
More comments? I just wanted to point out, you know, one thing that we're super proud of as a board is, um... That we're super proud of as a board is the, our full-time employees, Public Works guys and then your guys, you know, being able to run calls. It's been probably seven, maybe seven years now. It's phenomenal. I mean, the numbers show that these guys are getting on trucks and getting the trucks out, but I think that's, you know, something we do as a township that's just phenomenal.
And the numbers aren't going down, you see that. You know, those are just daytime numbers. It's crazy.
Yeah. Great job, thank you.
No, just excellent.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, any comments or questions?
Report.
Mr. Galloway?
No comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's an report, Rich. Any other end-of-year reports, Mr. Andrews or Mr. Lawson? Just kidding, you're not doing it tonight anyway. Next year for the end-of-year report, we're going to adopt the BOMS. All right, if that is a manager comment, Mr. Tequita?
I have no comments for this meeting.
All right. If it's a board comment, Mr. Brasky?
No comment.
No comment.
Mr. Galloway?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
I just have one. It's about the recycling. I had a couple of residents reach out to me, and they're concerned about the recycling pickup isn't happening, or it's a day or so later, and their trash is blown all over, please. So I need somebody to look into, not the rubbish part, but the actual recycling pickup.
We'll follow up on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
My miss picked up too.
That's all.
All right. I have no comment either, so with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Motion made in segment, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.